The roll, please.
Kathy Griffith.
Here.
Jason Blair.
Here.
Glenn Lewis. Louis Williams.
Here.
Adam Webb.
Here.
Melissa Hunt.
Here. Item B is Pledge of Allegiance led by Kaylee McCaskill with Girl Scout Troop 798. And before we get started, Kaylee, I'd like to wish you a happy birthday.
All right.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great job. Hopefully you get to go do something fun for your birthday. Item C is swearing in of Rob Clark, a city council member for Ward Two by Judge Blake Burgen.
Thank you. Clark, if you'll come stand right here, we're going to look and make sure the press likes. If you'll raise your right hand, please. I, Rob Clark, all aware that I will support, obey, and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Oklahoma. I will unknowingly receive, indirectly or indirectly, any money or other valuable thing, for the performance or non-performance of any act or duty pending to my office other than the compensation allowed by law. I further swear I will perform my duties as council member to the City of Moore to the best of my ability. So help me God. Congratulations.
All right. Welcome, Councilman Clark. Item two is a consent doc. Item A. Oh, oh, sorry, we have to do roll call. We call the roll again.
Kathy Griffith.
Here.
Jason Blair.
Here.
Glenn Lewis. Louis Williams.
Here.
Adam Webb.
Here.
Rob Clark.
Here.
Melissa Hunt.
Here. All right. Item two is a consent doc. Item A, receive and approve the minutes of the regular city council meeting held February 20th, 2024. Item B, accept a 400 and 504 square foot of additional sanitary sewer easement from the Sunny Lane Estates Mobile Home Park for construction and maintenance of the southeast lift station, gravity flow, 36-inch sewer main project. Item C, approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY 2023-2024 in the amount of $3,056,306, $3,056,306.81.
Second.
Motion in a second. We call the vote, please.
Kathy Griffith.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Rob Clark.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes. Item passes. Item three, consider approval of an update to the on-call agreement with Mechek and Associates, updating hourly rates for reviewing engineering services.
Vice Mayor and Council. This is an item to approve a new contract with Mechek and Associates. They currently provide our plan review for drainage reviews. And they, of course, have seen the same increase in costs that we all have. They are requesting a new fee schedule. We typically will use their services for a project manager. They have, with this new fee schedule, added some different levels to the project manager. But it looks like we're going to see anywhere from a 30% to 50% increase in those costs. Now, of course, I'd need to make sure you understand that the cost that we pay really depends on the amount of development that we get in that needs to be reviewed. So if we don't have any development or little development in a year, then, of course, we don't incur these costs.
So this is totally just on-call?
That's correct.
When we request that they do their work?
That's correct.
Make a motion to approve.
Second. Motion in a second. We call the vote, please.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Rob Clark.
Yes.
Kathy Griffith.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes. Item four, consider approval of an update to the on-call agreement with Civil and Environmental Consultants, Inc., CEC, updating hourly rates for review of engineering services.
Vice Mayor and Council, this is a similar request. CEC does provide our plan review for paving, water, and sewer. Obviously, not the drainage. Their costs have seen an increase as well, going up approximately 25%. So we will see our costs, hourly costs, go from $180 an hour to $220 per hour. And again, this is an on-call contract, so the total amount that we end up paying is completely dependent on how much development we have going around.
So are we preparing to adjust our fees to pass this on?
Yes. You will see that in the next fee update, my request to raise that.
Okay, thank you. Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion in a second. We call the vote, please.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Rob Clark.
Yes.
Kathy Griffith.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes. Item five, consider approval of a lot split of common area A of the Renaissance Crossing Edition located south of Southwest 34th Street and west of Eastern Avenue, application by Renaissance Crossing HOA, Robert Enfield, President.
Vice Mayor and Council, items number five and six on your agenda are companion items. Several weeks ago, Mr. Enfield, the president of the Renaissance Crossing HOA, did contact the city. He had an interested party inquiring about purchasing the Renaissance Crossing HOA common area, which is used for drainage. And obviously, we, as the city, don't want to see that being sold off to an investor out of state who doesn't realize what they're buying. So we did make an offer to the HOA to purchase the drainage facility along Eastern Avenue. And the HOA was agreeable, but they wanted to keep the property directly in front of their neighborhood. There is a sketch of that located in your packet, page 77. So this lot split is to split that piece of property off from the common area. The HOA will retain ownership of that one lot to be used for disputification of their neighborhood. And the city would retain or be granted the area along Eastern Avenue that's used for drainage.
So it's the 50 by 100 that's just adjacent to the common area?
That's correct.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
A motion in a second. We call the vote, please.
Rob Clark.
Yes.
Kathy Griffith.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes. Item six, consider approval of the purchase of 1.19 acres of permanent right-of-way from Renaissance Crossing Homeowners Association in the amount of $8,000 for future roadway and drainage improvements along Southeastern Avenue, south of Southwest 34th Street.
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion in a second. We call the vote, please.
Kathy Griffith.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Rob Clark.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes. Item seven, consider approval of an ordinance number 104824, amending Part 12, Chapter 8, Section 12-806 of the Flood Damage Prevention Regulations by adopting the FEMA Flood Insurance Rate Maps effective March 27th, 2024.
Vice Mayor and Council, this ordinance will officially adopt the new FEMA flood maps. The updates have not. The maps are very, cover a very large area, oftentimes going across different jurisdictional boundaries. The maps that were, the part of the maps that were updated were not actually in Moore city limits. They were on a different part in Oklahoma City and Norman, but on the same panel that includes more. The result of that is that we still have to adopt the new maps because they are the regulating maps. But there's really no change to our floodplain in the city.
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion in a second. We call the vote, please.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Rob Clark.
Yes.
Kathy Griffith.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes. Item eight is discuss commercial landscaping compliance regulations and direct staff as appropriate.
Just as a summary, I was asked to do a landscaping inspection of all of the commercial properties since we adopted our landscaping regulations in 2000. I personally did not do them. I had my staff do them, but they did go out. They inspected 247 commercial properties. Out of those, about 91 to 93 were deemed to be non, not in compliance. I should specify that this was for trees only. The method that we used is we went back into Google Earth and printed an aerial of the property when it was first developed and built. And we then identified how many trees. We tried to do shrubs, but to be quite honest, the aerials weren't good enough. And we just weren't quite sure how many shrubs they actually started out with. So we limited it to trees because those we could see. And so 91 to 93 are not in compliance. We did reach out to other central Oklahoma communities to see how they handled these issues. Norman does require a maintenance bond whenever new construction is done for landscaping. Edmund treats it just like a code enforcement issue. So they will go out, I think, three to five years after the property is developed. They'll do that inspection. If it fails, then they will just issue a notice, have a timeframe for compliance. If they don't comply, then they will issue a citation. I have asked them if they have ever issued citations. And the woman I was speaking with said that she has personally never issued a citation, that they've always come into compliance. And then, of course, Oklahoma City does not do anything after the final occupancy. And Midwest City currently does not do anything, but they are looking at doing a landscaping inspection program. So they're interested to know how we are going to be handling it. So after considering all of these practices, I had a suggestion, of course, you're, we're asking for advice and for direction on this. But since we have already completed the landscaping inspections, do recommend that we send notices out to the violators, see how many will come into compliance. And for those that don't, we could either issue citations. Some, that may spur some to go ahead and complete the landscaping. Others, they may not care because they might be out of state. And also, I do believe that a lot of these are in strip centers or high-turnover buildings. So every time we do an occupancy permit or a remodel, we can certainly do a landscaping inspection and have that property come back into compliance at that time. So that's kind of the breadth of staff ideas, but we are absolutely willing to hear what you would like to do.
Thank you for looking into that. And I think it's obvious, if you drive through Moore versus Norman and Edmund, that there is a massive difference in the appearance of businesses in accordance to the landscaping. And I appreciate you added this, being on the agenda and you guys looking into it. I think my issue is that, you know, without naming any specific businesses from up here, you know, I can drive around and see entire hedge lines that are dead, that are completely obvious right along the street, that have been dead since 2021, like a cold snap. And no one's bothered to do anything. And these are major businesses with the ability to switch those out. And it's, my frustration with it is it seems to be no burden to these businesses if they're in Norman or Edmund and these things are handled immediately. Whereas I come to a location in our town, again, without being specific, but I can point to, you know, if I had to just ramble them off, probably 15 specific locations where it's an eyesore that is very memorable. And so when we have people from out of town that come visit us, and if you interact with them and ask these questions, a comment that I always ask people is how do we make this town better? Or what do you think? This is an obvious point that's brought up and it's the easiest one to spot when you visit Moore versus these other locations. And so any type of mechanism that ensures these businesses are going to take ownership of their property and maintain them in an appropriate way that's acceptable, just in the most basic of appearances, I'm all for. I don't think that we burden businesses in any way in this town. And so this is a very minor ask that is completely acceptable in other towns that are much, maybe a business person would label them as not as business-friendly as we are. It's not an issue in those places, so I don't see why it should be an issue here at all. And so I think it's fair to give people time, you know, for the next planting season to adjust. And that may mean the spring or the fall, so it might be a month-long wait. But definitely a follow-up and a quick turnaround, especially for offenses that have been there for two to three years. And it blows my mind, some of the businesses I see where it's been out there dead that long. And it's, you know, people just walk right by it even to enter the building. And so I'm glad you're addressing it and glad we're bringing it up.
What kind of leverage do we have for businesses that are out of state, that are owned by out of state? And I mean, we can issue citation after citation after citation, then what happens?
Well, nothing, to be honest. The only leverage we would have in something like that, I mean, that we have come up with is, you know, we do have control over the water meter. And we do have control over, you know, exterior property maintenance activities that could include pulling the electric meter. I mean, those are pretty drastic.
Right, right.
Remedies, but it is a remedy that you could consider.
Okay.
Excuse me, Elizabeth, but for these entities, though, that engage in refinancings and things like that, don't we get notifications?
We usually do, yes. Yes, so oftentimes, we will get random requests from lenders and other due diligence firms when a property is being refinanced or maybe even being sold to a different investor to see if they are meeting all of city codes. And so this would obviously be one thing that we could, you know, tag on there, saying that they do have an open violation for landscaping. But, I mean, that is an option.
So the feedback from the other cities, though, is that they've had success without the need to hand out any citations, correct?
That's what Edmund says and Norman.
Depends on who you talk to.
Right. That's.
I wouldn't take that for gossip.
Yeah, I talked with, they have a department called a community appearance. And I talked to the woman who's in charge of that.
They have that department. It shows.
Yeah.
So, I'm sorry, when, speaking with these other cities, do we feel that our regulations are adequate? Do they line up with the other cities as far as landscape? Should we?
Yes. So several years ago, two, time escapes me, but it might be like two to three years ago now, we have looked at our landscaping requirements. And we are in line with the other cities as far as how many trees and how many shrubs we require.
Just out of curiosity, when looking at these other businesses, did we find, say, particular pockets in the community where there were more violations than others? We did?
Yes. And it's, sometimes it's owner-specific. I'll be honest with that. But, you know, there's a lot of properties on shields that, you know, we do require landscaping no matter what. If you are building a new building and those who have industrial properties, we still require them to put in the landscaping, but they are probably the most likely to not maintain that.
And so the steps moving forward after, you know, you get direction, talking about trying not to write citations, do we send a letter saying you've got 30, 45 days, whatever, to come in compliance and then we'll issue a citation at that point?
Yes, yes. We would give them.
So another option is we could hire the landscaping done ourselves and send them, add it to their water bill. Just, I'm thinking out loud.
Yeah, I mean.
She looks at the city attorney.
It's done that way with private residences.
Right.
Exactly.
Something we could look into, maybe.
Right. I think you're saying if they don't comply.
Yeah.
Right, right, right.
As a last-ditch effort. I mean, we want to play nicely with everybody.
Right, right.
And that might take a city code update, but we could definitely look into that. Yeah, as a, sure.
I think the council feels it's very, I mean, feels pretty strongly about this, that, so I appreciate all your work on this, yeah.
Thank you. And I agree with Adam's remarks because I think a lot of these areas, these pockets, you know, they just start, you know, if one business isn't doing it, then, but if we can get all the businesses to start.
Part of it's the high turnover thing, too.
Yes.
Well, maybe so, but I'm saying if we can get that.
That creates another vacuum.
Sure, but if we can get that area to all come in line, it will change the way that area looks.
Right.
So.
And there are some, Elizabeth, that I don't, correct me if I'm wrong, but maybe Google Earth wouldn't be necessary because we've had some big-box stores come online in the last few years that already, you know, maybe we gave a little bit and we negotiated. And part of the negotiation was we'll have more landscaping and more beautification. And yet, when I go to that property today, a third of what we gave up is dead. So we gave, and then they fulfill their end of it, but then fail. And what we gave up, then it's all, and I can be specific outside of this without calling anyone out, but that's pretty frustrating, I think, to all of us.
Yes.
So what direction, I mean, what?
What do you need from us?
Yeah.
Well, I think I've heard that you would like us to send notices and give a quick, as quick as possible turnaround, understanding the limitations of the planting seasons. And see where we get from there. And, you know, depending on who is still left that's not in compliance, then we can look at other code updates that would give us more powers.
Sounds good.
Because this item was just a discuss. So you come back and tell us what you feel like with the staff levels we have and everything. What can we, what can we enforce? What can we do? And then we'll, we'll do, we'll change whatever we need to change.
Okay.
Yeah, and Brooks, would you mind keeping us in the loop on this? Just, you know, each, I don't know, timeframe, but just so we know kind of which businesses are responding and how they're complying and which ones aren't. So we'll be prepared at the next meeting. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item nine is consider renewal of a contract with A R C Pyrotechnics for the city's annual Fourth of July and Christmas Spectacular Fireworks Display in the total budgeted amount of $58,500.
Vice Mayor and Council, this contract combines the Fourth of July and Christmas Spectacular Fireworks displays in one item for the same amounts that were in 2023. Recommend approval.
Is this, do we ask any sponsor, I know we tried one year.
Yes, we get sponsors.
Oh, we do? Okay, very good.
Get sponsors.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
A motion in a second. We call the vote, please.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Rob Clark.
Yes.
Kathy Griffith.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes. Item 10, consider a contract with S and S Staffing doing business as a higher go for a staffing agreement for the Parks and Cemetery Maintenance Department.
This is, the S and S Staffing Agreement is the annual agreement used to hire temporary park staff when needed during the summer. Recommend approval.
So this is who we use today? Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion in a second. We call the vote, please.
Kathy Griffith.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Rob Clark.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes. We will now recess the city council meeting and convene the Moore Public Works Authority meeting. Item 11 is a consent doc. Item A, receive and approve the minutes of the regular Moore Public Works Authority meeting held February 20th, 2024. Item B, approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY 2023-2024 in the amount of $386,820.81.
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion in a second. We call the vote, please.
Kathy Griffith.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Rob Clark.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes. And we will now recess the Moore Public Works Authority meeting and convene the Moore Risk Management meeting. Item 12 is a consent docket. Item A, receive and approve the minutes of the regular Moore Risk Management meeting held February 20th, 2024. Item B, approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY 2023-2024 in the amount of $243,916.26.
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion in a second. We call the vote, please.
Kathy Griffith.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Rob Clark.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes. We'll now recess the Moore Risk Management meeting and reconvene the city council meeting. Item 13 is new business. Item A is citizens forum for items not on the agenda. We don't have anybody signed up to speak. Would anybody like to speak? All right.
We got, we got one.
If you, if you'll come up to the podium and if you'll state your name and address for the record, and then you have five minutes.
Okay. My name is Cleveland Passmore. I reside at 1217 Woodbine Circle. I spoke with you last July on the creek, eroding my property into it. I'm at a standstill of what we're going to have to do to just come up on an equal measure on who needs to do what. Do I need to bring dirt in? Are y'all going to do it? Who's over this? I need someone to make a move on it because I've had Stan Drake, when I first moved here in 96, say that a bond issue may, you know, reside to get it done. Nothing's been done. I'm retiring. My house is going in the drink. I need something to find out.
Aware of what's going.
Yes, yes.
So, okay, perfect.
All right.
Do we know when we can give him an update so that he has a clear?
Yeah, it's, it's really an issue of, part of it is an issue of access. And then also we'll have to, of course, get with the Corps of Engineers and get a 404 permit.
Okay.
Well, that's one of my other.
There are a few things that we can do. I believe you've got a concrete section that's starting to fail. It would be on the opposite side of the channel where you live, I believe.
Yeah, I have no concrete. The laws of gravity are taking me in the creek.
Yeah, on the other side of the channel.
South side of it. And as far as. Okay. Okay, well, we need to get on, you know, now's the time. Summer's coming. The spring rains are coming. We've got construction, like the floodplains up here on Eastern. I'm at the head of the Little River. It's coming right to me, you know, so I need to get something resolved on it. So I'm here today to get the representatives to get the ball rolling on it so we can get something going to meet the objective.
When you, when you say access, is that we need access through him or is it another part of access?
There's, if I remember right, from when Tony and I went out and looked at it, there was a section getting the equipment out into the channel. I think on the, what would be on the east side, that we can get possibly in between a couple of blocks there at the application, that we can, you know, likely be able to get some equipment through there.
Okay.
And we think we can get an application to the Corps of Engineers this week, next week?
It's.
That's, that's been my concern, is the Corps of, the application to the Corps is, you know, how many gallons a minute's coming down through there? What do they, you know, proceed in futuristic measures?
Have we done everything on our end? Are we in the process? Oh, okay, perfect, okay.
Well, I sure appreciate y'all's time here.
Thank you, thank you for coming up.
I'd like to see y'all out there and we can get this done. There's a lot of green belts in Norman and stuff. There's a lot of stuff that could be thought on to find out what needs to be done in that area because it's not just me, it's the whole neighborhood.
Agreed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right. Item B is items from city council trustees.
Rob, welcome.
Yes, Rob, welcome.
Thank you.
Welcome to our first meeting.
I have one thing. Do we have an update on Eastern Avenue, that section? I mean, those, I mean, those poor businesses that are in that little section have, I'm sorry, Jerry.
Drove down yesterday, so.
Yes, the only update that I can give you is that I've met with the contractor a week ago. And the contractor is not going to come back until AT&amp;T relocates their utilities that are in the way. I've talked to AT&amp;T multiple times. They're working on it. I've talked to AT&amp;T multiple times, they're working on it, they, where they're at now is that they have relocated the new lines, there's three lines that were in that section that has not been done in front of Napa.
And Scroggins.
Yeah, and Scroggins, yeah, there's, there's three lines that are run parallel, AT&amp;T lines that run parallel to Eastern Avenue, they're in the middle of the outside lane, and so the contractor is, you know, can't do his scarification because the lines are in the way, and, and if they do hit them, then they'll turn around and file a claim against them, and, and so, we're, we're at the mercy of AT&amp;T at this point.
On AT&amp;T now?
Uh, the, the, well, on this particular location, if I may walk through the process, when the, when the, when the engineer completes or gets to about 75, 70% of completion on the design plans, we go ahead and have meetings with all of the utility companies, we give them sets, copies of the sets of plans, and, and then we ask them to go back and let us know where their utilities are, do we have them located in the right location, and then they provide maps to us and, and come back and say, yes, everything's good, or we have a conflict, is there something that you can do to redesign a certain section so that we don't have to relocate? If we can, we work with them and try to do that, if we can't, then they have to relocate them. We sent to all of the utility companies, every utility came back and said, all of our utilities are clear, you're good to go, go ahead and start, you know, bid the project and demolish it, you know, we can start demolition of, of one side or the other. As soon as we got onto the, if you remember, we did the northbound lanes first, those two lanes, as soon as we got into that, it was probably two months into the project, it was determined that there was a gas line that was in the middle of the, out on the northbound lanes, and there was also a, eighteen, two AT&amp;T lines that were in the way, and that is part of what we're still working on with AT&amp;T, so it's been, you know, close to a year.
Have they given any reason why they're in such a delay?
The reason that we've, we've received is that, you know, there's been so many, so much ARPA money and federal funding money that has gone out to all of these organizations, all of the municipalities and, and counties and agencies, and as a result of that, you know, the city of Moore, we have a lot more projects, the city of Oklahoma City, there's just a lot more work that has come out as a result of all of these projects, and AT&amp;T and ONG and others, they just have not been able to hire the additional personnel to keep up with the relocations that are required with each of these projects, and as a result, you know, it's, it's, it's the municipality or the agency that suffers through the weight, and, you know, part of the problem on Eastern was, is that, you know, they, they were not aware that they had some, their, their maps were not as accurate as they thought they were, and they were not aware that they had a couple of lines i- in the roadway.
Can we update the contracting process to put, to be able to put some type of a time limit on these things when we notify them and ask that it be done?
Well, yeah.
Specifically to the utilities, so.
No.
Because that's been, that's been a struggle on that whole project.
Oh, yes, yeah, not that I'm aware of. I've not seen anybody that has been able to tell AT, you know, get a timeframe from AT&amp;T that they, they are able to stay with. They, you know, part, the other part of what they're, they're dealing with is, because there's so many projects, it takes, you know, well, when we first asked, when, when, when can you get these lines relocated on the, about two months into the project on the north, northbound traffic lanes, the response we got was, well, we're probably looking at 12 to 14 months. And, and so, we're just now getting some of those, you know, then when we, so what we did is we, you know, we, we did what we could, left openings where we couldn't, you know, work, and then we decided we would go over and switch to the, to the east side, because they said they were clear on the, on the southbound lanes, and then that's when we encountered three more cables that run parallel under the outside lane for southbound. And now, they did, they have expedited the remove, or the relocation of those lines from the standpoint of, you know, they've, they've worked out a, an agreement with O G and E, and they're hanging them on the O G and E poles. However, what's taking the timeframe that's taking so long for this southbound lanes are that they are unable to get enough people that, you know, take care of all the splicing of all of these lines, and it's scheduling of the splicing is the big hangup right now.
Is there any way we can go ahead and start the pro, so we wait till 75% of the planning's done, so when we do ninth, fourth through 12th, is there any way to expedite that process and get them those specific plans sooner, so we don't run into this problem over there?
Well, it's not a, it's, it's not a factor of them, I mean, we, we get them, we get them the plans as soon as that, you know, that, that the design engineer feels comfortable that we've got enough information from them and so forth, and we get them to them, it's more at 60%, really, after preliminary plans, we'll send them, you know, a set of plans and saying, this is what we have. We, we send them as soon as we feel that we have accurate enough information to do that.
Do they have to do part of their work underneath the roads after we tear them up, or do they just run new lines and abandon the ones that are there?
They'll typically abandon the ones that are there and run new lines.
The problem is, they don't know where their lines are, I mean, ultimately, right? I mean, that's...
That is a, that, in, in this particular project, that has been the, the, the higher percentage of the problem has been that they just were not aware.
So how is the burden on the contractor if they don't know where their own lines are at?
It's, 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 you mean on our roadway contractor?
Right, so if we cut the line by accident, our contractor sent a bill from AT&amp;T, correct? Is that what I'm understanding?
Well, that, if you, if you go ahead and hit a line, they will, it's almost automatic, they'll send you a claim.
But they don't know where their lines are, so how is that, can you figure this out?
You're in assessment.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
They'll know when there's an outage.
They'll know, and, and Brooks is exactly right, if you hit it, they'll be out there within a day.
I don't, I guess I don't see how it's our responsibility when they don't know where their own equipment is.
Well, it's really not our responsibility.
Right.
It's, it's their responsibility, it's just, as I said, that they're...
The contractor won't move forward until...
The contractor doesn't want to take that...
I don't see how they're legally liable to pay the expense when AT&amp;T can't correctly tell them where the line is, so if they don't say, if we do the all-clear and say the lines aren't there, and then we accidentally hit it, how is it still the contract's fault?
Yeah, if they sent a bill for that, I mean, if they were...
They have, yeah, they have filed claims, I mean, they've, they've filed claims against the city when we've been putting in water lines, and they, they send, you know, they'll, they'll file a claim on every, every line that it's got.
Contractors just want to stay away from that delay.
And, and it, and I will say, it's not just Moore that's dealing with this problem, it's, it's every city is dealing with the same problem. When, when we, we go to different continuing education meetings and we talk to, hey, what's going on, you know, how, how are you dealing with the utilities, it's, we're not, we, you know, just trying to survive is really what, what you, the answer we get, so.
I know we're a couple of years out on the projects from the bond issue, but can we go ahead and put those requests in now? And then we'll tell them, we'll get them the plans as we get closer. Go ahead and start.
Well, actually, you know, we, we've done better with, I mean, we, you know, the way that we do our bond issues now, we'll do bond issues, you know, that'll include, well, the, the one in last November, you know, we'll, we'll go ahead and, the plans are already 60% complete, you know, so we've, we've sent those to the, to the utility companies, and then now, and then the other half, or not, not dollar-wise, but project-wise, the other half of projects are, you know, we, we hire the design consultant to start the design, and so in a few years, when, when we are ready to do the construction on those that are under design now, you know, we'll, we'll already be able to send out the 60% plans to the utility companies. I think as, as the funding from the federal government and other areas, you know, becomes less and less, it'll become less of a problem again, because there just won't be the number of projects that there are, that they're having to deal with now.
Yeah, it's been a long time since we've had this many projects under works all at one time.
That's true, yep.
Thanks, Jerry.
Thank you, Jerry.
Yep.
Item C is items from the city trust manager.
Nothing at this time.
All right, item 14 is adjournment.
Second.
A motion and a second, we call the vote, please.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Rob Clark?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?